It is 4:02 PM. This is February 6, 2024. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Britt Hornsby.
Luann Hook.
Jennifer Davila.
Anne Lepinen.
Erin Nelson serving as town manager.
Then the first order of business is the approval of the Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes of January 16, 2024. I know it was almost three weeks ago, but has everybody read them? Are there any changes, modifications, points of discussion?
I'll motion to accept the minutes.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. Public comment, there will be a three-minute time limit for any person wishing to make a public comment. If you exceed the three-minute time limit, without permission, the meeting controller will mute you. Prior to the meeting, people should have put their name in the chat box or raised the hand icon. Erin, do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment?
I did not see anyone indicate today.
Then we'll move to the first item, which is update on the status of Equal Justice Government to Government Environmental Protection Grant and a vote for approval of the award of the state grant of $445,000. So Erin, why don't you go ahead and take this?
Alrighty, so we have had a couple conversations with our program manager through the EPA. There's quite a lot to be done kind of behind the scenes before we can actually receive a contract to sign for the EPA grant. So what I'm putting together right now is an updated budget and timeline because clearly just a couple things have changed since April regarding our project at the CCC. And really for that EPA grant, I really need the buy-in from the entire council regarding how we plan to use that money. We have a total of three years to use it per the contract, or per the grant, but we will probably end up using it within two years. And so it's important for us to understand how and when we're spending that money. I'd like the council to kind of agree upon the major areas in which we'll use it. Now, of course, there will be some stipulations, just in terms of what was already kind of outlined in the grant proposal. But later down on our agenda today, I have, we have a request to maybe have an additional work session so we can get this in front of you all to approve as a draft. Additionally, we do need UDB's collaboration on some additional items before this can go into final contract form. There is additional agreement information that the EPA provides a template for that we will need, we will need a signed contract between the two entities. And this is outside of our existing partnership agreement, and it talks specifically about the grant because there is so much that goes through with the pass-through funds of the $200,000 or 20% of the grant just passes directly through UDB. So we'll really be working on that. And then from them, we will also need a more detailed budget in terms of how they're planning on spending their funds. So what we submitted in the grant back in April was pretty detailed, some big projects, but we just said, you know, we indicated that 20% per the grant stipulations would go to UDB. Now we need to tighten that up a little bit, and they need to provide kind of the projects that they're interested in. In going after, an interesting note, we can start issuing RFPs for professional services or for contract work. We cannot spend any EPA funding, we can't spend any funding prior to signing the contract, but we could start looking for contractors and professional services. And so as I am wrapping up a bunch of paperwork to get the contract done, I think I will also be starting on some of these RFPs. They would go before you council for approval. We want to make sure that they're really super detailed. We can have our EPA project manager take a look at them as well, but it would be great to get them out to bid so then we would be ready to hire the contractors as soon as we have the funds available. So I'm thinking big projects like our fire suppression system, insulation project, potentially electrical. But again, all of this is going to fall into how we think those timelines are going to align. And so that's really, I'm hoping that we can talk about in a work session, how all of this really starts fitting into place because we do have money to spend. Anne, any notes on that before we go to the state grant?
I think the only thing is generally for people listening is that RFP means a request for proposal, and which gets confusing because there are other RF somethings. And so the other thing is that I've been in fairly consistent contact with the executive director of Utah Deneba Kaya encouraging some immediacy response on this subaward template that has to be done by UDB. One of the things that they're looking for is an attorney to represent UDB. They will not be using Lee Kapaloski any further. And so they're trying to find alternate representation. But as Erin and I have discussed, time is of the essence on this. And so hopefully either tomorrow, if Janet Chi comes through Bluff, or on Monday, Erin and I will be meeting with her to really, unfortunately, put some pressure on that this has to be done. We can't delay. We've got probably two or three weeks that we really need to wrap things up to be able to do the final negotiations.
And I did forget that very important deadline. So the project manager through EPA is targeting like an early March, March 1st contract date. So that would be our goal. And then that from that date would be the three years that we have to spend those funds. So thank you for that reminder, Anne. Okay, so moving on to the second part of this, earlier, I guess it was in January, the state economic office reached out and said that we received the funding for the $445,000 grant, also all going towards the CCC building. And so we were noticed of it, but now we have to get the contract signed to send it over. The great news about this particular grant is while we still have reporting requirements, the ways in which we use the funds are a little less regulated than what we would see through a federal grant. So we would, in the contract that you all received a copy of, it notates that we received 90% of the funding at the beginning. So as soon as the contract is signed, we can get that money into our account. And then we have two years to use the funds. And after the project is completed, we will have to spend a little bit of capital, but then we get the final 10% after the project is completely done. So 90% to get us going, 10% down the line. This one does have a match for us, and we've talked about that previously. But I think as we get down the agenda even further, we'll talk about capital projects and how, you know, the small percentage match can come out of your capital projects fund when we get there. Any questions, Anne, comments on the contract, additional comments on the contract?
I don't have anything additional other than to just alert everybody to one kind of quirky piece to this, which I discussed earlier today with our attorney. This particular grant will need to go into our general fund and not into the acquisition and development fund. The fund, the money is earmarked specifically and only for use with the CCC with the Cooperative Cultural Center. However, because a requirement specific to this grant, it has to go into the general fund, which is, which is fine because it will still need both entities, you know, to be talking and approving projects, but it won't be going in through the acquisition and redevelopment account section in our county. So that being said, when we get to the point of having to discuss some other possible additions or changes to the acquisition and redevelopment agreement, we might want to include Chris's recommendation, a paragraph that says this money is earmarked for this project, however, it must be segregated into our general fund. So I think that's the only piece I have. Questions for Erin or me about the money? We do need a vote to approve the contract and approve our separate contribution or match.
I vote, I make a motion that we approve the signing of the contract and with the match.
A second.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. This should hit the bank account fairly quickly, so there'll be a need to begin talking with Linda and Erin and myself to get everything set up. But thank you. We're, we now have, once that million dollars is approved and we sign off, we'll have approximately 1.6 million to put into the building. So we're making progress. Yep. All right, the number two, update on the work by AmeriCorps, NCCC team red, the site visit by Senator Mike Lee Staff on February 2nd, a workshop with Melanie Daniels from UDB and Reagan White Salucci. So the team is split up right now. They, some of them are working in the food pantry side of the modular at the Cooperative Cultural Center. And that carpet has been ripped up, it's been, the office has been primed, and I believe they'll start painting tomorrow. I just received Janet Chi's authorization to do the UDB office side of the modular doing the same thing. So carpet will be ripped up, the walls will be primed and they'll be painted. As I pointed out to Janet, you really don't have a concept of how much better it looks with those walls painted and that carpet gone until you've got the side-by-side comparison. And the carpet in the UDB side smells just like the carpet in the food pantry side it smelled, and that smell is gone. So it really is going to make both sides much easier and cleaner to utilize. Then the other part of the team is working at the community center. The utility rooms have been emptied out. There will be a wall repair to the one room where the chairs and tables knocked into the wall and created a pretty good hole. Then they'll prime, they'll scrub, prime and paint in there. Then there had been some remaining work at the Cooperative Cultural Center, mostly just sweeping out all the rooms and getting the screws off the floor and finishing up the kitchen floor. It was a little difficult to have it look clean, but the USDA, I'll be talking about that in a bit, but the USDA inspection will be coming in for the food pantry and looking at both kitchens. So they did a deep industrial clean of the Cooperative Cultural Center kitchen yesterday, no, Friday, last week, one day last week. And then you'll see them around, they're cleaning up some brush piles at the community center. There was a question from AmeriCorps higher-ups about pulling the team a week early, but that's not going to happen. So next week, with, the weather's supposed to be good, we're running through a list of things they can be doing outside, like finishing up, not finishing, restaining the Fire Mesa kitchen wood that's on the upper level that hasn't been done for a while, maybe repainting picnic tables, doing some general cleanup, maybe power wash the Fire Mesa kitchen, do the same thing on like pavilion and re-tape the pickleball, the outdoor pickleball. The other thing, and I really, I got a lot of these ideas from Tina Kretsky, so thanks to Tina. And then Erin had some, but one of the other things is it's been four years since we thoroughly sanitized chairs and tables. And so with the weather being good, those can all go outside, be cleaned, sit in the sun for a day, and then use upholstery cleaner on those cloth seats that I hate. So I think we've got plenty of projects to move them into that last two days of the next week. And I'll probably be talking with you, Britt, about what we might want to think about in terms of putting that gate in, whether that's feasible now or if we want to hold off. But we talked about putting gates so people could drive through by the modular to pick up firewood if we got that program going. So AmeriCorps is working hard tonight, they're at the Smokehouse enjoying somebody's birthday. Tied to that was a site visit by Senator Mike Lee Staff, Colby, I forgot Colby's last name, but he came down and spent about two plus hours with the team. We did site visits. The team explained what they were doing. Then we had lunch. Again, thank you very much to Twin Rocks and Francis because we thought that they closed at three and they closed at two and they stayed open so that everybody could eat. So the team had lunch with Colby, who was, he does the non-political side of Mike Lee's work, so meeting with community members and that type of thing. That went really quite well. And then we've lined up a workshop with Reagan White Salucci from Utah State Extension to look at the community gardens for people in the community who are interested in the team on February 14th from 10:00 to 11:30 AM. And then after that, I'm working with Melanie Daniels from Utah Deneba Kaya to have her do a traditional foods kind of tutorial instruction, maybe for that whole afternoon with the idea that Melanie hasn't heard this yet. Maybe they can prepare some traditional foods at the kitchen to be able to take back or eat even at the kitchen for that evening. And then the last thing is the team leaves, I believe, on the 21st of February, and we usually try to have some kind of a dinner or gathering for them. I think this year, what has been talked about is maybe doing something simple like burgers and non-meat burgers on the grill here at our house. So stay tuned, I'll throw some dates out to everyone, and then depending on how many people can come to it, we'll, you know, get that posted that people will be here. Any questions about that kind of long description or any additions anyone has to this? And I really appreciate people who are helping out with this. Linda made a planning run today. Erin's been doing a lot of coverage at the BCC and Bev Smith's been working with the team in the modulars, so, and moving the food pantry. So really exciting, but it definitely does kind of bounced around with the amount of work just because of not knowing whether they'd be here next a week and a half or not. All right, then if there's nothing else on that, then number three. This is, I'm going to have Erin cover this because she's done some, some work with pathways in addition to what I've been doing. So Erin?
Yes, so with our ongoing work with Pathway Associates on the strategic plan, they are going to come in next week and kind of help guide us and guide the new council members into kind of the first steps of implementing our plan. So we definitely have had some things that we have accomplished over the last eight months or so, but there's quite a lot that is earmarked for work or hopefully finishing in 2024. So each of you should have received an email with a Google Drive link. And so certainly for the three council members who have been on the council, certainly go in there. And all we're looking to do in this is just if there are projects that you've been working on that are part of the strategic plan, we just want to file those so we can see our current work in progress. And then we will go through that document in depth during the work session. And then if there's anything exists or anything else that should be talked about in the regular meeting, we can, we can do that. But some homework before the February 13th meeting, we'll have about a half hour with Julie and Judith for that work session. We, in order to make it easier on everyone, I actually, I think Liam suggested, we've had a couple suggestions about having printed copies. So part of this agenda item is approval of printed bound copies. And I got some quote, a couple different quotes, but Southwest Printing over in Cortez is able to do it for us. I figure eight copies, one for each of us, plus two, one to stay in the office and the loner if people want to look at it. As for the strategic plan, as well as the active transportation plan, they would be about $170 each for eight copies. If we can get approval, those can get done this week.
Erin is.
Go ahead.
The 170 is for each plan, I assume?
Correct, each plan, yes. No, not each, each plan, eight copies.
That'd be an expensive book.
That would be an expensive book.
Sure. Thank you for getting those ordered up then.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think for some of us, it's easier to read the printed than on the screen and to take notes. So that was a good suggestion. Right now, I can go Friday afternoon. If somebody is already going, I might be willing to give up the Friday afternoon that I'm looking forward to lunch and being away for a half a day. But if anyone is going over, that would probably be more efficient. Any questions about that? Luann, thanks for suggesting that we do the same thing with the active transportation. Then if there's nothing else on that, number four.
Do we need a motion to approve that?
Uh, sure, that would be good.
Okay, I'll motion that we approve acquiring printed copies of both the strategic plan and the active transportation plan.
Back in a second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Number four, report on the results of point-in-time unsheltered persons count and the request from the Samlin County Administrator for Representation on a Review Committee on Unsheltered Issues. So because I wasn't very organized about getting back with people who said they might be willing to help, I just went ahead and did the drive-around that has to be done and checked in with various agencies. At that point in time, we did not have any evidence of unsheltered people. There was no one at the mission, there was no one up in the BLM lands that we have within our boundaries, there was no one in the washes. Unfortunately, I think we do now have two folks that are unsheltered, but at the time that we did the point-in-time count, we didn't. So I reported that back to Mac McDonald, and because there was no data to collect, it just goes in as a zero, which I wish we could revise it, but we can't because I know that there are people traveling through that stay here that don't have shelter. That being said, because Samlin County has to have a review team of two to look over policies and whatever, I'm on the local homeless coalition for Samlin County, and Mac called me and asked if I would sit on that review committee. He's assured me it probably won't take a great deal of time, but I'm fine with it since I'm on the, you know, the committee just for Samlin County itself, but this is, I think, looking at policies across the state. So unless somebody has a burning interest in doing that, I told Mac, I just, you know, it just seemed consistent with being on the LHCC rather than having two of us kind of duplicate. Does anybody have an objection or have an objection or prefer to do it? In which case, I'd probably suggest they do the LHCC too. Okay, I'll just go ahead and keep that on my list. Any questions about it? All right, the number five is a review and discussion of the Hanson Planning Group's initial audit of the town subdivision code and the next steps. Erin, that went out in the packet too, didn't it?
Yes, those initial findings should have gone out to everyone.
And I hope I sent them out to everyone earlier, but, and what we had talked about internally with the five of us is planning and zoning would pick the group, and they did, they picked Hanson to do the, the changes. And I'm fine if planning and zoning just takes it to the, the point that we have to vote on it and continues to work with Hanson. Does anybody want to do it differently? We can do it ourselves, but I think since it's revising the subdivision code, it'd be best if planning and zoning continued to work.
I think that makes the most sense myself. They're the most familiar with what they've got already and have done a lot of study on stuff up to, up to this point.
I think it's important for them to stay with it because we've got some other changes that are coming down from Samlin County in terms of how, how and who issues building permits. And that's something I'll get on the agenda for next week to have a discussion, but I didn't add it on this one because I don't really have all the information yet, but there will be some changes to land use clearance and building permit issuances and data tracking. So if someone can help remind me to send this off to P&amp;Z, I know I copied Amanda Podmore and everyone on it, but just to be sure that they know this is back with them. Any questions or thoughts? Okay, number six, an update on the design review committee work in Utah Deneba Kaya regarding the NDN grant. The design review committee has not been meeting this month in part because of the executive directors need to be in Salt Lake City much more frequently this past month. I would hope that we'll start back up the first week of March, if not sooner, but that's part of the conversation with Janet Chi tomorrow or Monday, whichever day we actually catch up with her. We need to get back to that, particularly in light of the grants that we're bringing in and the work that needs to be done. But one indicator of lack of transfer of information, for lack of a better phrase, is that the $200,000 grant to NDN that was written by Dave Conine and put out there in 20, early 2023, I believe, it might have been late 2022, but there was a $200,000 grant that was supposedly awarded to Utah Deneba Kaya from NDN, which is in the Dakotas. We, as a town council or design review committee, never saw the written verification of that, but Janet Chi was unaware of that grant. So I provided the information to her, I believe it was last Thursday. So hopefully when we meet with her this week or Monday, we'll have a little more information about how their funding sources are looking right now, which is really important because a lot of this information may need to be transferred over in the EPA's subaward template that they have to do. So more on that hopefully next week, and then Jen will definitely, I'm going to definitely try to get a meeting for next Tuesday or whatever day would work best for Janet, but it could be that we need to switch the day in order to accommodate that. Do you have a day of the week that's the worst for you?
I am leaving town on Thursday, so if it could happen before Thursday, that would be great. I need to be in Phoenix by four o'clock on Thursday afternoon, so.
Okay, great, that gives us some direction then in talking with Janet. Any questions on either point? And moving to number seven, an update on the renovations to the Bluff Town offices and food pantry. Now to do that first and then we'll move to these others. Erin, why don't you describe where we are with the renovations and then I'll just give one little piece of information on the food pantry.
So Weldon Boulders has completed most of the work. Um, there are just a couple additional punch list items, including installing an ADA actuator on the main door. And then we have a couple of door handles we need to change out to make those accessible. Just a couple of little touch ups here and there, but, uh, the offices are looking very nice. Um, AmeriCorps did start moving in some of the food from the modular for the food pantry. Um, so there is, there's food in here and, um, we also completed the last of the ARPA reporting. Um, so ARPA funds funded quite a lot of this renovation. And so that reporting has been completed. Hopefully Ian got that confirmation. So, so we're in good shape there. And, um, I feel, feel like we should either, I don't know, Ian suggested like an open house or people should come on by and see, see the new space. It's very nice. And yeah, with the, with the exception, exception of just a couple of minor punch list items, I think we're just about there.
I think the only thing that, um, I would add to it is that part of our renovation, uh, funding came from the flooding that occurred at the senior center. And Erin did a fine job yesterday, uh, explaining to the insurance adjuster why we feel that the payment of $10,000 was not sufficient to cover our actual loss. I had been concerned that we had a depreciation policy versus replacement. But when I contacted, uh, Utah local government, no, we have a replacement policy. So Erin did a really good job. I sat and, and listened about explaining difficulty of getting contractors, materials, where we're located, that, you know, the work had to be done, what, you know, what everything looked like. So I'm hopeful that this little appeal will give us some more money. That being said, the insurance claim is ready to close off once we get word on whether they'll adjust upward a little bit. Or, you know, quite a few thousand dollars. And then the ARPA funds are done. On the food pantry, it's looking great. Beth Smith, Kathy Carson and Ginny Burns have been working on moving food from modular, like Erin said, into the food pantry. There's a number of changes that need to be, um, made in terms of how food is labeled and stored. And I, I would really like to have an open house after we get the punch list done and the food pantry is moved in. So that people can see kind of the whole completed project. We'll also have at that point, the utility rooms done and the gym cleaned up, which, um, really sets this building up for us being able to put it aside absent just regular routine upkeep. For probably five years, being able to say, hey, this building is done. Now we can focus on that, um, on the Cooperative Cultural Center a hundred percent. Let's see, the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture contacted me. They will need to inspect everything for the food pantry. So that's one reason that the push is on to get the modular painted and that carpet out. And then the industrial kitchen at the Cooperative Cultural Center. Fire Mesa Kitchen's in good shape and passed a hundred percent. And then the food pantry in the Bluff Community Center, because what the USDA does is they will inspect for all the appropriate division of food from the USDA side to the private contribution side. Then they require certain types of labeling. None of this was known to the food pantry because with COVID, they stopped doing any of these inspections in detail and they didn't provide information. So the food pantry's been working on hitting all the marks. And I'm, I'm confident that we'll have, we'll pass the USDA with no problem. And I say we, meaning the food pantry will pass, but our facilities will pass because the food pantry is a standalone. Which also is the, I think on here, I have somewhere. Let me just look. Yeah, in order to update our lease then, I, um, want to include both buildings because the way that the food distribution will work is the truck will still come on that first full week, that Friday, drop the food. Ginny Burns and her team will distribute. The leftover remaining food will be stored in the food pantry side for storage in the modular. And the shop where the really cool shopping center in our old chair storage room. That's where that will be set up. So they'll need to have a comprehensive lease that covers kind of both the modular and the community center. So with that being said, any questions, any concerns?
Are they still using the refrigeration and stuff at the CCC?
Um, the only, no, the, the shorter answer is, um, no, they moved the glass front one into the community center. And I think the plan is to only store overnight the perishables in the big one. And there's nothing in the walk-ins. Well, there's, there is, there's seeds from Utah Deneva Kaya in one of the walk-ins. But that's part of the direction that USDA is, is giving us that. Um, how long you can hold perishable foods and where they have to be held. Oh, which is the other reason they're inspecting Fire Mesa Kitchen is I'm just covering the base of anticipation when summer comes and vegetables come in. Will we need to ask, um, the councils to use storage in there overnight for, for perishables? So that's why kind of all the kitchens are involved. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, I think that moves us.
Did we do, what did you decide on power? Do they pay power or does the town pay their power?
The town, yeah, there has, there's no change in it. The town has always covered it because there's no easy way to separate it. The way to do it would be to charge a rent fee. Because we don't have any separate, separate meters or anything like that.
Yeah, I suppose if it's a long-term thing, there, you could put a meter in or do a, they have some small meters that you could meter it if it becomes. I mean, those big ones can be pretty expensive.
Right, that's why, I mean, they haven't been using them. So if you're talking about the walk-ins, UDB's been using them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and UDB is required under our contract to pay two-thirds of all, all the utilities. So, um, yeah, the food pantry hasn't been using those big ones at all. So that certainly if somebody wants to revisit that, we, we can do that. The only thing I would caution is that the food pantry itself is run by Ginny Burns on, um, with, with no financial contributions at this point. All the grants from San Juan County have dried up. So there's no grant money available for 2024. So, but we certainly can, you know, put it on if somebody wants it as an, an agenda discussion.
I just want to make sure for transparency that we all know how it's been running.
All right, then moving to number eight, which is the public meeting here on January 31st, 2024 with the San Juan Economic Development and Points Consulting for Housing Assessment in San Juan County. Somebody want to talk about that, somebody who was there?
I can talk about it if you'd like. Um, I was, uh, the points people came down and presented data that they had collected throughout the whole county. Uh, they broke it down, I believe, into five, five or six sections, uh, basing on the communities. I think they had Spanish Valley, Monticello, Blanding, Bluff and Monument Valley. So they had a lot of data that they presented. It was nice because we got to, uh, look and see how they had collected the data and found that some of it was probably fairly inaccurate, accurate for our area. But with, with the information that they had, I think they tried to do a good job and noted some inconsistencies and were willing to change those. Uh, this was, I believe, probably the first time that they had even approached the Navajo Nation. So we had a lot of Navajo residents who came and expressed a lot of concerns about housing deficiencies on the reservation. Uh, I think that was a much needed discussion. I kind of wish that they had branched it off and actually done another session that kind of delved more into how San Juan County can help, um, with Navajo Nation and getting housing available for the reservation. Kind of felt like it detracted from, from our portion of the meeting in that I don't know that they got to really wrap up things the way they wanted to because a lot of the time was devoted to Navajo Nation discussions, which, you know, the county doesn't really have a lot of control over, but certainly can be helpful. Um, I think it was good that those concerns were expressed though, because we, we represent them as well and it needed to be heard. So that was good. Um, but other than that, I look forward to seeing what the housing, um, what, what the assessment comes out with. I think one, one thing that they did determine was they kind of gave us a ladder example of a efficient community in, in different levels of where people live for housing. And it seems like the levels in Bluff, we have the probably bottom rung of the ladder covered fairly well with that being you live at your existing home, getting ready to move out. And then we were missing about the next three or four steps. And then the final step was single family home on a larger, um, portion of property, which we also have. So I think it really gave a good example of how Bluff's housing is, is missing a lot of steps in the ideal picture. So that was good. That was my take on it.
So you're going to hear a dog barking. We're doing dog babysitting and some, somebody came in with a lot of energy. To follow up on Jen's comment, yeah, I felt like the conversation was really an excellent conversation, but the majority of the open time to kind of talk and clear up some of the missed data really was taken up with looking at the Navajo Nation and what we can and can't do. Because of that, I was able to snag the two presenters on their way back from Monument Valley. And I met with Maria and Brian for about an hour and a half. And with, I gave them all the copies of the plans, like, um, the listening to Bluff information, the LAP, what, LEAP planning. The, they were very interested in the water study, the 50-year water study, so I got a copy of that. I was able to point them to the Chem Gardner Institute, um, population study that was done in 2018. And my recollection was when we incorporated, the count was 262. And today they asked me to verify because they couldn't get the verification online anywhere. And I went back and yes, it was 262 that were verified in 2018. And then that also gave an analysis as to how Chem Gardner got there and kind of historical perspective. So there were a number of points that, you know, I could sense they, they were struggling with. So we've provided a lot more data to them about Bluff particular itself. I thought it was interesting that they came up with zero rentals in Bluff where that was actually like off. So there were, there were things, I think they'll be very thorough. They've communicated and asked for a couple of pieces of information to fill in. So I feel like they're, you know, really taking this very seriously at breaking all of us out. I, I'm really glad we pushed to get that meeting here rather than us traveling to Monument Valley or landing at six in the evening. I think we had really good attendance. Anyone else want to add or give a thought on that? All right, then the next one is discussion and a vote for approval of sending a letter of support to uh, Utah Department of Transportation for the federal grant application to plan bike and pedestrian trails on highways 191, 163 and 162. Lu, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, um, in the packet, there's the, the draft letter. So the, the Utah bike trails, it's a thousand miles of trails. And you've heard me talk about it before that they want to put throughout Utah. So one of them that's on their radar is, uh, Elaine Gislers was the one that first brought it up to them as supporting it from the county, and that would be from Moab to Monument Valley. And when they put that into their planning draft, they also put the leg over to Montezuma Creek. So it's, it's a real comprehensive highway trail, um, that they would get federal funding to do the plan. The plan, and then they talked about plan and design for over to Montezuma Creek and over to Monument Valley. So this is a letter that they've asked for local, uh, letters of support. So, um, they, uh, reached out to our active transportation, um, group and, uh, just asked us to, you know, revisit all the people that gave us support at the beginning for our section and see if they'd be willing to support the bigger project. And so the town of Bluff is a great one to have the letter on the letterhead and send to them to save. It, what it does is saves Utah money. They can have the federal government fund it, um, instead of our state money. And it can get pushed through a little quicker for the planning. Planning and zoning, it's on their agenda tomorrow night for the same purpose. They said the more people they hear from, the stronger the application is and the more chances that we can get this section planned. So, um, I just would like to, uh, get the vote to approve it, to get it on our town of Bluff letterhead. And, uh, the active transportation group is, um, collecting them, um, so that we have a folder of support to go along with our other letters of support from the plans. Um, but are there any questions on it? It's just, it's a bigger, bigger regional plan than what we've been previously working on. And, and that's the extent of our work on it would be just to send them a letter of support for them to plan it.
Jen, has the business owners of Bluff been approached to write a letter of support?
Not, not yet. She, because Jen, Jen's not the president anymore. We just.
Right, but I was just asking as a member of Bob, she, or do you know, have they been approached? If, if, if it's numbers that make a difference.
Oh, you mean, have they been approached by UDOT? No, they left that to us. That's why I know.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think that it is on the, on the business owners of Bluff radar though, um, it's just. And, and I think that they probably can't speak for everybody and I am not the president anymore. So, so I'm just a, a voting member along with all the rest of the business owners. But, um, I think it is on the radar and I think that they're probably in favor of it.
So Luann, can you do the letter and, you know, clean it up and get it?
Yeah.
This letterhead?
It's, um, I'm not sure if I have that. I was, um, I remember we tossed around the letterhead a few times earlier on, but, um, I think probably Erin could probably whip it out a little quicker. But we've got a draft, um, letter that came out in the, the packet and the map is on there that shows this project. But he said that, you know, they've done other grants and that we don't need to rewrite the letter. And he wants the, the gist of the letter, the bulk of it to stay in there. It, it shows that what people are signing support for is actually what they're supporting. So they don't come back and say, oh, I thought that was here or there or whatever. So it, it really clearly states what project we'd be supporting. So it, it really clearly states what project we'd be supporting. And then it's just on letterhead and a, a signature. So, um, and I can help if, if, if you need me to help in that way.
Yeah, it, it seems like if active transportation advisory is, you know, wanting this, it'd be good to have some of that work done to put the letter together and get it off.
Has it, has our letterhead changed at all from the one I've got? Seemed like I saw it had switched up a little bit. But Erin, maybe you can send me what.
I can just get over there.
Um, get it signed and sent in, but yeah.
So anybody want to make a motion to approve this? I'll make a motion to approve sending a letter of support to Utah Department of Transportation for the federal grant application.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. Then Lou, the next one is yours as well. I just didn't fail to designate it. The report on planning and zoning is public hearing.
Right. And I think all of us were either online or in person, listening to that public hearing, which is as it should be that, um, that I attend all the, the regular meetings and the workshops and whatnot. But, um, this was public hearing to hear from everyone in town, uh, about the sign ordinance. So there were a lot of comments from the business owners. I guess there were no comments from, uh, residents saying a or nay on what they like or don't like, but there were lots of comments from business owners on, uh, sustainability of their businesses. Um, what's beautiful, what's not beautiful and all those kinds of things. So planning and zoning was the, the key group. They're listening to this because they are going to tweak it even more. They have a meeting tomorrow night where they bring it up again. And then their plan is to, to submit what the, the, their five, that group of five thinks is reasonable. Ordinance and bring it to the town council. And then we would have an option to tweak it some more or to vote on it as it is. And the draft is online on our website, townofbluff.org.
Any further comments on the public hearing or questions? So when is the next, um, planning and zoning meeting?
It's tomorrow night. Tomorrow night at six and it's on their agenda. And they, they mentioned that they may need another work session, but, um, anyway, it's tomorrow night at six.
And then, so their next public, their next meeting would be tomorrow's the seventh. So the next one would be the twenty-first, February twenty-first?
Sounds right. Seven fourteen.
No, they're skipping a week because of President's Day. So their next scheduled one would be March sixth.
That, okay. I think I'll probably talk to, um, the chair because that would take it this into March before we'd even see it on a final draft unless they schedule something specially. So I'll just touch base with Amanda Podmore. Then the, the next is number eleven, review and vote on the state auditor's required privacy policy statement for posting on our website. So we received a notice that we were out of compliance with the privacy policy notice. And that falls on me because at the Utah League of Cities in Town Annual Training, Annual Conference, that was noted. I put it in my notes that we're, uh, had a requirement now to do it and I completely lost track of it. So there's a template which I sent out to, um, I think everybody got that has been recommended by Utah League of Cities and Towns and the state auditor, uh, to use. When I was doing, going through the template, I was like, well, we don't gather data on our website. And then Linda reminded me, you know, that it's grandma stuff comes in, um, employees, then we've got vendors. So what I'd like to do is just have everybody, you know, go ahead and review it. And I will move it to a work session to have a little more detailed discussion to fill in the blanks on it as to how we handle, uh, the data because we have to reference who has access, like the grandma records that Linda, uh, is the grandma, uh, record keeper. So this is the, uh, the template, but we do need to fill it in. So that's why I sent out the, the link to the, the email that has the link to the training, which is very short. And then the other questions that you need to be asking. So I can take any questions or comments now. Um, but it need, this needs some work and we've, I think we've got, they gave us until, they gave everybody that's not in compliance because there were a lot of, a lot of entities until the end of March or the first part of April. But we'll have it out of here in the next week. So thoughts, comments? So if everyone takes a look at it, then we can, I can get it cleaned up and we can vote on it maybe hopefully next week or the next week. Um, then moving to number twelve, discussion of the capital improvements, improvement plan and setting a work, uh, session for that. And you'll note that I have number fifteen, a discussion of a work session on this coming Friday. But this would be, this capital improvement plan would be not a part of the request I'm making for this Friday. So Erin, do you want to explain kind of where we are with that capital improvement plan?
Yeah. So the strategic plan calls for us to develop a capital improvement plan, um, by March of this year. And this is a really important document that you all will be developing because it really sets the tone for, um, monies that we have in surplus, um, that can go to bigger projects. So, you know, clearly year to year, we have a lot of administrative costs. We have grants that come in for particular projects. But overall, um, there is, uh, an opportunity for us to, to fund larger projects that might take a couple of years to build up the funding for. Um, the town actually already has, um, a fund where money and I'll call it surplus, you know, we can, we'll get all into budgeting here in a couple of months. But, um, you know, essentially we need a balanced budget, but there is this line for surplus which goes into a capital projects account. And so we actually already have some money set aside and we need to have a plan if we have additional surplus. So, um, what we would want to do is have kind of go through the strategic plan, see which projects the community and town has already identified as important ones that we want to fund over the next couple of years. Um, we can then have discussions if there's anything else to be added to that. But kind of think big projects like parks or buildings or, you know, just things that would not fall under your regular administrative fees. Um, you, I did send out in the packet, um, just like a really brief overview of what these plans usually look like. Um, we would want to put a little bit of time into that, but I think it's actually perfect to talk about this after we have that strategic planning overview with pathways next week. So I would look at this as a target late February, early March, and then kind of wrapping up by spring um, to really set the direction on this. So any questions from the packet material I sent out or any clarifications I can make about what a C I P is?
I think that, that one of the things we will really need to take a look at is we have this big project with the CCC, with the Cooperative Cultural Center, and we also have a big ask on the airport in three or four years. And it, so those are the kinds of things that Erin's talking about, like how do we dovetail? And luckily we'll be able to set aside absent an emergency, the community center and Fire Mesa Kitchen. That, the, those assets are going to be perfectly well maintained for a while. But yeah, I would, I like the idea of maybe, let's, maybe doing something that's first week of March, a work session on that. What's the first? I gotta look at a calendar and that. So the first meeting we have in March is the fifth. And we could do a work session before and talk about the capital improvement plan. Like this is time to look at what Erin sent out and time for us to get through the strategic planning with, um, pathways. What do, what do people think about that, doing it that way?
If we're doing a D R C meeting on that day, um, it would have to be kind of in the morning.
I think the read I'm getting from Janet is that Tuesdays don't seem to work well for her. She was looking at Thursdays and before I went to you and to whoever else will be participating, I'd see if Janet can nail that down. That's a really good point. So if we just, if we can have a consensus that March fifth would work and we'll just have to work around how, how Tuesdays work. Is there anyone that would have a conflict? I know that Britt's class, but this would be somewhere before the meeting, not after.
I just need to have it at, uh, ten or later. I'm, I do breakfast on Tuesday mornings and I can usually have things wrapped up by then.
Or we could all come for breakfast.
You can come to breakfast if you want. Happy to accommodate that.
And if we did it the fifth, our, uh, active transportation group meets on the fifth at one o'clock. So that usually goes till two or two thirty, but there's still that time before four. But the morning would be probably nice, just have a break in between.
Yeah. The only problem I can see with doing the morning is that that's also San Juan County Commission meeting morning. And like today, I didn't weigh in because there was nothing that, it was pretty routine and nothing that affected Bluff or that I felt I'd need it to, to be on for. How would people?
What'd you say, Erin?
I was just thinking maybe the twelfth. Since that first, first week of the month is usually pretty packed.
There wouldn't be a commission meeting. There wouldn't be an active transportation. Would, would that work to do a work session, say at, at three on the twelfth?
Words for me.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
I might have to do it remotely, but I'm fine.
Well, then, let's just set it for March twelfth, three o'clock P M. Um, I will be doing it remotely as well. So I'll get that noticed for the, just for the capital improvement plan so that we can just focus on that. Then if there's nothing further on that, number thirteen, a discussion of a lease between the town of Bluff and Cow Canyon Coffee Shop for use of Fire Mesa Kitchen and the food manager's permit for public health. So I, when Cow Canyon Coffee first raised this, it looked like a lease would, would probably be the best way they want to be able to use Fire Mesa Kitchen to bake. And they actually have used it a few times. But then in, going back and forth with Malia Collins, it really looks like we could do just the standard use, um, form that we use for rental of the Fire Mesa Kitchen with some, just some adaptations, because I don't think that they want to be nailed down to a specific schedule like I was thinking they would want, that there's kind of like as they would need to bake and, and it was available. Well, it seems to me that Malia's suggestion that we just use the standard form and they just give the request to Malia and she books it. The question that I have then, if people are okay with that rather than a lease, which is much more painful to have to do um, and locks them into specific days. The question I would have is what would be an appropriate charge for using that when they're using it when no one else has rented it? They're a new business getting started. They're trying to start up and not in the peak of season. Or can we cut them a break of letting them use it without a fee by working with Malia to use it when no one else is using it, assuming they will do the cleanup and they have their food manager's stuff and they're not selling from there? Until we get to the season and then revisit a specific amount. Um, and part of how I started thinking about it is when you look at the half day rental, the full day rental, I don't know if they're using the kitchen two hours, three hours, ten hours, but it's when no one else is using it and they know how it has to be cleaned. I'm inclined to say go to the, like maybe June first, not charge, have Malia continue to track it, have them continue to make requests in writing during times that no one else is there. Not where they would be using it when we can get a rental fee. And then in June, set a, a reasonable fee if they haven't worked out all their ducks with, um, perhaps lies or, uh, someone else at Cow Canyon. So thinking?
I think that that would work and we do need to charge them a fee at some point because there could be other people who would want to do something like this.
Yeah. I mean, that would be my only thing is if we do it once, well, I feel like we got to do it, you know, for everybody. So.
And if we have this little break in period, you know, that, that kind of gives them a test run to see if they're going to make it or break it, I guess. And they have to clean it. So if they actually clean it, that's a, a thing too. So.
Is Fire Mesa separately, does it have a separate meter for utilities?
No.
That would be my only suggestion, just in terms of utility usage, um, both propane and electricity.
So, um, if it's June first, well, as we get into end of March, it starts getting busier. And May should be really busy. Um, so they could be using it a lot as we get into the busier season. Maybe, um, June first might, maybe it should be, uh, like May first, but June first would work.
Are you considering the season as in the start of the tourist season in Bluff? So when they would be busier or are you considering the season into a time where we might get more rentals from Fire Mesa Kitchen? Cause if you're considering it the busier season, that actually, my bookings have significantly picked up starting the second week of March. So, you know, if, if, if they're going to, if we're basing it on when they're going to get busier, I would think it's going to be significantly earlier than June.
An alternative would be just to, since I imagine, and should have asked Malia this question. I imagine there, what they're baking and the amount of time they're using it varies every time. Like if you're making muffins or whatever versus quiche. You know, we could think about just having a use contract that's hourly and give them like thirty days now to, to adjust their thinking to an hourly and then do something on it, on the occasional use contract that's hourly, which would address Britt's thing about if somebody else pops in and says, hey, I'm starting a, a pie shop like Diana Davidson might be doing and I need the oven. And then that addresses the concern on utilities and propane too.
Yeah, I like that plan. I mean, it seems, it's not, if you have the half day, day, and then just an hourly, that makes total sense.
And especially where these, uh, types are certified for cleaning up themselves and, you know, we. And especially where these, uh, types are certified for cleaning up themselves and, you know, we. Cause that's always the big problem is having to go back in and some pay somebody to clean up after them. But if, if they are cleaning it to kitchen specs. That takes a big load off.
Maybe that could just, that could be a condition of any hourly rent. It's not worth it until, unless you're in a half day or more, do your own cleaning.
I, I like this plan. I think it would be helpful too, if we asked them to track their hours. So that we can kind of see and they can see how much time it's taking them and, and what the need is.
So why don't I do this? Why don't I have a further discussion with either the owners or with Malia? Say that for thir, this next 30 days. We're not charging while we negotiate what the hourly rate would be and that. Say March. We start with March first or in that.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say let them give it a try till April first and then they'll know if they even want to use it and how many hours they're in there and whatnot.
And then I'll just put it back on the agenda for a discussion and vote on hourly with everyone, if we've got a consensus that that's the way to go. Yeah, it kind of meets everybody's questions and concerns. So. I'll work with Malia and get that organized. Malia Collins, at ten something last night, took her food manager test. They, her choice was something like 10:30 in the evening or one o'clock in the morning. It's like whatever. So she took that, I'm assuming she passed when she gets this, the certificate. Then I can fill out the permit for San Juan County permitting. To hang on the wall that shows we've been inspected, that we passed the inspection and that we have a food, uh, manager. And the fact that both Kate Atchison and, um. Hannah. I'm not sure of Hannah's last name. They both have their food managers so that when they're in there using it, um, even though they're not selling, they are, they're covered. They've covered themselves. So then I'll get that application filed with San Juan County. Any questions? Of course, we won't get a permit issued in all likelihood because they have no one to issue permits, but we can say it's at least been applied for. Okay, moving to number 14, report on end of the year financial reports and Plorus, that's yours, Linda.
At the end of every quarter, I do the, um. The state and the federal financials, it's, you know, basically employees withholding taxes. And, but it's different at the end of the year because you have to link the, um, part of it to social security. And this year, social security and other entities have added, um. Several layers of, of, um. Authentic. You have to prove that you're, basically you're proving you're not a robot and, um, it's. And a lot of entities are doing this right now. There's a ton of hacking going on. And if you haven't seen it already, you're going to be required to prove, to show several le, uh, layers of. Authenticity. So I've done everything that I need to do except get into social security. And, um, I'm in the first level, but the second level requires, um. Passport, driver's license, and it has, it won't accept those things. Um, but it turns out. Pretty much everyone is having this problem. So our accounting package. Is offering this year for free to submit our W2s and 1099s for us for free. Which is, and I haven't quite, I should get it submitted tomorrow to them. So it's a huge, uh, relief for them to do this. Um. And they may be, they may do it at the end of the year, but, uh, it's been incredibly helpful. That, that they are doing this for all their clients.
Those authentications, that's pretty much what we ran into with doing some of the other earlier things where it doesn't want to accept. The, for the, I'm thinking of the SAM number or the U, UIN or whatever. It was one of those, but you, you know, it doesn't like the way you've rooted it. Instead of N for north, you spell out north and it doesn't like it and then it rejects it. So. Erin and I can feel for you, Linda. We've been down this path of. And no matter, it seems like no matter how early you start. It's always one more thing that they've added or changed or the system isn't picking up. So thanks for getting all that done. Any questions for Linda about it or? All right. So number 15. Erin and I have, have been talking and there is so much work that Erin is doing and has to do on the EPA grant. Where the turnaround time for approval of our final application. They're aiming for March first. And in order for all of us to understand what this, uh, what the requirements are. I really feel like if, if we can do a work session on Friday at all, or if not on Monday. Something so that Erin is able to lay out where she is, what she needs, what we need from UDB. So, um, and that we make sure that we're not waiting until the final product is being rolled out by Erin. And to the little extent that I'm even cognizant of all the work she's doing. Roll it out and then go, oh, whoops, we didn't, I don't like this. And. I think it would make Erin's life a little, um. Maybe just to give a little relief to Erin to say, yeah, we're on board with you as far as you've gotten. I think that would be a good idea sooner rather than later. So. Does anyone, I know the food pantry distribution is this Friday. I have AmeriCorps doing work. Could people do Friday or would Monday be easier to get together with Erin?
I'm super available Friday.
I could make Friday morning work, um, but I feel like everybody is really kind of wrapped up. It seemed like the last time we tried to do something on food, food pantry day, it kind of fell apart. So maybe Monday would be better.
The AmeriCorps is helping Fri, aren't they with the food pantry?
They're not going to do the distribution at all, um, because they're trying, well, there are a number of reasons, but no, that decision was made. Partly because adding new people means that Jenny has to give more instructions and it's really worth for a one-time deal. And so they'll be doing other things to help move food that afternoon to the store in the community center and to the modular for storage. And return, helping return some items.
Monday's open for me as well.
I'm buying either one.
Friday, I can do it before one. I get Lauda at one.
Are you free Monday, Linda? What about you, Erin? Friday or Monday?
The only conflict on Monday is we have a call with EPA from 10 to 11:30. Outside of that, I'm.
Do you want to meet after you talk to them? Will you have more information or?
Maybe so.
So could we aim for, say maybe one o'clock or 1:30 on Monday?
That seems good.
One sounds good.
One o'clock better than 1:30? How about you guys, Jen, Linda, Britt?
It's all, that works fine for me.
Yeah, either one.
Should we say 1:30 or one? 1:30?
So. One or 1:30? I, one, one works better for me because we'll go, we can go from the EPA. Erin and I will be able to eat and then we can start up and not have to worry about the rest of the afternoon.
Okay. One sounds good.
It would probably be helpful to have this work session physically at the building if, if at all possible. And AmeriCorps should be done with their part of the utility rooms. I'm hoping by Thursday. So we should have, you know, the whole space band.
Okay. So Monday at one, uh, one till?
Probably like two, 2:15.
Okay.
We'll try to keep it to an hour, but it'll probably be just a little longer.
Okay. So I'll get that out and noticed and work with Linda on posting. Is there any other, other? The only other I have is that there was a press release that the land exchange between Sitla and BLM has been withdrawn. There will be no land exchange at this point. And I think. That went out in several different methods. Then it is. 5:24 PM.
And just to clarify that 17 says we were doing an executive session, but that got canceled. We're not moving into any executive session.
That's correct. There is no executive session and there is no motion to move into it. So 5:24.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I'm turning off the recorder. Have a good evening.